Good afternoon. Welcome to the Spokane City Council briefing session for May 2. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Sapon.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right. Before we brief the advanced agenda, we're going to have an interview with Erin Merchar, who's been nominated by the mayor to serve on the Bicycle Advisory Board. Erin, if you just want to come up to the mic and speak into the mic and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving on the board.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for having me. I'm Erin Merchar. I grew up in Spokane. I went to Ferris High School and Eastern for college. I got my master's in urban and regional planning a couple of years ago and now work as a full-time planner for a local consulting firm. So, planning is my background and because of that, I've really gotten into active transportation and what that means for cities and just making sure that cities have really strong bicycle infrastructure and well-connected networks for equity purposes, for recreation and active transportation and health purposes as well. So, that's kind of why I'm here.
All right. Great. Any questions? Councilmember Wilkerson?
The city is hiring. Thank you.
Good to know. Thanks.
I have one, but you can go first if you'd like.
Two questions. The first one, are you related, I'm not asking you where you went to high school because I know, are you related to Joanne?
I'm not. No, but I have heard of her.
Okay. So, my second question is, just knowing what you know, if you had one big change you could make right now to active transportation and bicycling in the community, what would it be?
One big change? I think, well, I think that there's already such a strong network of trails. I think it'd be working on the connections of all of them. So, getting, you know, the Fish Lake and the Benburn and the Centennial, I know that those are all there, but I think extending some of those and connecting them so that you can, you know, I think the well-connectiveness is kind of the most important piece that would really help.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bingle?
Yes. Can you give me a definitive list of reasons why Eastern Washington University is better than Western Washington University?
A definitive list? Well, I think, I think we have, better than Western Washington University?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Well, I know we have an accredited urban planning program and I think that it's been accredited way longer than they have. So, I think that as far as urban planning goes, I know it's definitely the better option.
Thank you.
All right. Erin, thank you so much for your willingness to serve. We'll be voting on this. You don't have to be here when we vote. We'll let you know when you're officially on and you can start going to the meetings as a voting member. Really appreciate your service. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
All right. Let's brief the May 9 agenda. Administrator Perkins?
Thank you, Council President. Good afternoon, Council President, members of the City Council. This is the consent agenda for the advanced briefing Monday, May 9. The first three items, item number one is a purchase of sheet from Kruger Sheet Metal. Item two is a five-year valve blanket order with Serious US Industries doing business at Serious US Lock for the purchase of lock bars for solid waste dumpsters. And the third item is a purchase of three Johnny-Jaws, which allows front-load trucks to service rear-load dumpsters. All three of those individually, we will be briefed by Chris Avery.
Thank you and good afternoon, council members. Today, I'm seeking approval for the purchase of steel from Kruger Sheet Metal to replace the boiler skin at the White Energy Facility. The cost of this purchase is $69,986.67, including tax and shipping. The second item is a five-year value blanket with Serial US Industries for the purchase of lock bars for solid waste dumpsters. The estimated five-year expenditure is $72,000, including tax. And finally, the last item is purchase of three Johnny-Jaws from Solid Waste Systems for a total price of $59,850 plus tax. Be happy to answer any questions.
Chris, on the lock bars for the dumpsters, are they various-sized dumpsters or is there just a specific size that these locks will fit?
They service all of our commercial dumpsters, so various sizes.
Thank you.
So, Chris, I guess my question on number three, the Johnny-Jaws, is the reason for this because we've kind of changed how we approach these and we need to use the trucks we have to pick up a different type of dumpster? Or is it just for efficiency's sake so that if it happens to be on the route and that's just the way it is?
It's for efficiency's sake, both fleet-wise and operationally. This is a new technology and so previously, you have to have a dedicated rear-load truck to service a rear-load dumpster. This will allow us to do both with a front-load vehicle.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Item four is for the purchase of traffic sign blanks for the Street Department with the Intermountain Sign and Safety Company as well as Stripe Right. And the presenter is Clint Harris.
Good afternoon, Council President and Council. The Street Department is requesting approval to, for a five-year value blanket as a primary resource for purchasing traffic sign blanks from Intermountain Sign and Safety Spokane at an amount not to exceed $100,000 annually. And that's 4A. 4B would be for the Street Department seeking approval of a five-year value blanket as well to be used as a backup resource to purchase traffic sign blanks from Stripe Right at an amount not to exceed $100,000 annually. And then, item number five, the Street Department is seeking approval to contract street maintenance work to apply a microseal surface treatment on ash and maple from Maxwell to Northwest at a cost not to, at a cost of $122,699.35. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Clint. Item six is a contract with Consoor North America doing business as Murray Smith to provide water modeling analysis support for the draft water system plan required by the Washington State Department of Health. The briefer is Beryl Frederickson.
Hello, council members. Good afternoon. I hope everyone's well. I'm here to present or to acquire consent for a water model analysis contract. And this work will help verify the water system's capacity for the water system plan and proposed projects to, and verify their increase in capacity. We received two proposals under the RFQ process and we selected Murray Smith as the most qualified. The contract is for $200,000 for two years. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Beryl.
Thank you very much.
Item seven, authorization to increase the, pardon me, contract with Miramar Water for commercial water efficiency strategies in accordance with the Water Conservation Master Plan. And today's presenter is Lauren Searle.
Good afternoon, council. The Water Department is seeking approval for a contract with Miramar Water. This is a, for our commercial water efficiency strategies in conjunction with our Water Conservation Master Plan. This is a three-year contract not to exceed $75,000 per year with an option of two, or an option of one two-year renewal. Any questions?
So, Lauren, question for you. So, for, we're spending 750 over three years on this. What, do we expect that there will be savings greater than $750,000?
Seventy-five thousand?
I'm sorry, it's $75,000.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. So, it's 75 per year for three years?
Yes.
Okay. So, 1, 2, 25. So, do we expect, though, the strategies that this is going to bring will result in actual savings? Is that, is that the plan? Or is this more of an, like, just a broad analysis?
It is a broad analysis with the intent of reducing consumption on commercial properties. We don't foresee city saving that, but the businesses that we're assisting will conserve their consumption.
Okay. So, these will be recommendations for those individual businesses?
Yes.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Item eight, authorization to increase the administrative reserve on the contract with Max J. Cooney Company for the post-street pedestrian and utility bridge replacement project. The presenter is Kyle Tuig.
Good afternoon, City Council members. Item number eight is the authorization to increase the administrative reserve on the contract with Max J. Cooney Company of Spokane, Washington for the post-street pedestrian and utility bridge replacement project. Increase of 3.65 million for a total administrative reserve of 5.5 million, which is about a third of the, or 30% of the contract price of this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kyle. Items nine and 10 are regular part of our advanced briefing agenda. Item nine, report to the mayor of pending claims of payments, previously approved obligations with the Parks and Library, and claims approved by their respective boards. That's 9A. 9B, payroll claims of previously approved obligations. And item 10 will be city council meeting minutes. Those amounts and information will be completed for council's consideration on Monday, May 9. Moving to special budget ordinances. The first ordinance relates to the Human Services Grants Fund, and this action arises from the need to prevent evictions by paying past due and future rent and past due utilities while targeting limited resources to those in need of disbursement of these funds. Our briefer from the Finance Department Division is Jacob Miller.
Good afternoon and thank you, council. I'm presenting this SBO for the Eviction Rent Assistance Program, or ERAP 2.0, on behalf of CHHS. The city of Spokane has been awarded $5.879 million as part of Washington State's continuation of that program. The original program itself started in August of 2020. The program is funded using the American Rescue Plan Act funding that the state received. So, they're passing some of that along to us and other cities. So, this, yeah, as Johnny said, this award is intended to be used to prevent evictions by paying past due and future rent and utilities. An RFP process will take place following the acceptance of the award, just like the others have been, you know, the other, the prior versions of this throughout the last two years. The SBO portion of this just grants budget authority to record revenue and expense related to the award. And I can try to answer any questions anyone has.
Councilmember Stratton?
I'm just curious, what's the, the date to get that RFP done and moving out into the community?
I don't know exactly what date, but I can, I can send you a response via email.
That'd be great. Thanks.
Sorry, Council President. So, I see here that we're basically taking $300,000 of that and putting it towards city's administration of that rent assistance program. So, are we hiring a bunch of people to be able to get that out? Or where is that $300,000 going?
Yeah. So, we have internal staff to work on these awards and we don't fund them directly. So, we basically bill the award for the, for their time and expense. So, yeah, we won't be hiring additional staff for this.
And it'll be for that full $300,000 amount? Or will some of that just go to paying administration costs that aren't necessarily associated with this?
Yeah, some of it would be indirect as well.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Indirect.
Indirect.
Some of it would be for indirect expense, yeah.
Jake, I'm wondering, do we, do we know the, like, what the current volume of requests are, what the amount kind of that's out there that, that's in need, I guess, at this point in time?
I can, yeah, I can respond to that via email as well. I know that a lot, or the prior awards are basically fully spent and issued to people in the community.
Because we really haven't gotten a comprehensive look at who we've served and in what way. And, I mean, there's just a lot of details that I think we, we haven't really seen answers to, and I think that would be great. And I think it's important, too, in the context of if we're continuing to pay future rent, even though, I mean, the vast majority of the pandemic's behind us, not all of it, but the vast majority. So, if we're continuing to pay future rent, I mean, what's the point in which we stop that? And, and how do we balance that with the, I'm sure there's, there continues to be some need that remains from, from those who've been struggling. And so, how do we balance the limited amount of funds that are left versus paying future rent when we're kind of largely moving out of this situation?
Yeah, of course. One of the, I know one of the requirements for this is that their income must be at or below 80% of area median income and they have, they need to have, currently, need to currently have a missed or past due rent payment that hasn't been paid and also they're still occupying the residence. So, I think it requires that there's some need demonstrated there. But like you say, it could be a lot more people who have past due rent and if we're paying future rent, that'd be very good.
And I was just going to say, Councilmember Cathcart, I forget who I heard from, but my understanding is there's about $2 million out there that has been processed by our current vendors that they don't have funds for.
Right.
So, of this, you know, five or so million dollars, $2 million is going to go to pay that. And then, the balance of that's going to go for new applicants. Councilmember Kinnear?
And so, in answer to your question about administration, I mean, all that is, it's not formula exactly, but it has, you have to follow rules. So, you can't just willy-nilly start giving money out to whoever's working on it. We have to be accountable for all this money because it's coming from commerce. And they have some pretty strict guidelines as to how you give the money out, what kind of administrative costs qualify and so forth.
Yeah. I guess I was just curious because I think I read somewhere that people are behind $5,000 and change dollars in rent. And so, that's like 60 people's backed rent on the, that's, I guess, why I was wondering if we needed all 293 or if even more that could be put into that amount that's awarded to folks. So, that was my question.
So, and also just by background, CHHS, almost everybody in there is grant-funded. It's not coming from our general fund dollars. So, everyone, the director, the division leader, all those people, they have a, as Councilmember Kinnear, there's a formula for it. So, they're all, whatever they're being paid has to come from one of our grants. This is just one of them.
And that would be the example of where we bill for their hours. And that's where I said, we haven't had the staffing. So, that money was left on the table that we could have executed, maybe better service going forward. So, it's there.
Great. I think we're good.
All right. Thank you, Jacob. Under resolutions and final reading ordinances, first resolution addressing increasing overtime costs within the Spokane Fire Department.
And I just wanted to correct for the record that it's Councilmember Cathcart and Bingle who are the sponsors. So, on this one, it's, it still says that Councilmember Wilkerson and I, which we're not, but wanted you guys to have full credit.
I was going to point that out. Yeah, this, this is a resolution that I've submitted, essentially asking that we look at creative solutions to our overtime problems right now within the fire department, including finding a path to bringing back some of the firefighters that we let go last fall during the vaccine mandate phase. And because part of our, the reason for the overtime is a lack of staffing and being able to bring folks on immediately would help address that. So, that's the ask. Nobody wants to see a browned-out fire station or deficiencies in our service. And we are very, very quickly adding up the dollars in overtime. And so, we need to find some solutions and quick. So, that, that's the reason for bringing this forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Cathcart. So, we had left off, and this got deferred a couple of weeks ago, and legal was going to do a little bit more research that HR had done all that they could from a city attorney, Ornsby. So, my question is, is there anything different, even if this was approved, have we done all we could actually do within our legal scope to hire these firefighters back? And I think that's where we kind of left off at.
And the city attorney is here, and I would ask Mr. Ornsby to make his way to the dais to answer that question.
Thank you, City Attorney Ornsby.
We have been working on a report, as I told the council, we would get to you before next week. I'd hope to have it done by now, but we need to vet it with a number of different people because we're compiling information that we've gotten from a number of different locations. So, hopefully, within the next two or three days, we'll get it to you so that you have it in advance of the meeting next Monday. And we'll be happy to answer any questions or speak to any issues that the material we compile may raise in your minds.
And, Mike, on that, is that going to be publicly available?
No, it's our legal advice to you.
Okay.
So, it's, it's, it's going to be to you under the attorney-client label.
Okay.
And, and again, I'll be happy to meet with you individually or collectively as a council. That would have to be in an executive session, though, if it's more than three members.
I, I do think, though, that if there are legal issues precluding us from making some decisions, the public needs to have an understanding of what those are since it could mean higher taxes, it could mean less service, it could mean a lot of things. And so, I think they need to know what those legal issues are if we're going to make a decision based on that.
Okay.
And I would ask that you follow the law and if we, if it's about attorney-client privilege that we adhere to that.
Well, we will, all of the communications you get from our office is attorney-client privilege. What you choose to do with it as our client is your decision.
But don't we waive, then, don't we compromise?
You waive the privilege as to all the contents of the material we give you, yes.
If I could add, Council President, members of the council, as you all recall, the mayor and all of you as a body had asked for various elements to the overtime cost. One is an overtime study, which is currently going on. We hope to have some preliminary results and findings for you by the end of this month, as well as the forensic audit, which is also underway. Again, we hope to have some preliminary findings and a status report this month for your consideration.
So, Administrator Perkins, are we premature on this? If we were to move this forward, you have the opportunity to weigh in before we put you, get something on our agenda and the administration or legal's not ready to really present the data that's necessary for us to make a good decision. So...
I think it's...
I would, I guess I'd ask a question to the question, which is, would there be, if, at the end of the month, when we get those preliminary results, would there be something that we'd be ready to implement? Because we're spending money hand over fist. So, I, my issue is the urgency of how much we're spending.
I would say we will not be ready to implement anything because we will just be bringing a preliminary finding to you. I, I do not believe it will be the final finding, but we want to provide an update because then we would have to formulate a policy, a strategy, a game plan to being, to return to you for consideration. So, at the end of this month, we would not have something that would, you would be able to put in play.
How many people are we talking about? 12?
13, I believe.
13. Is that millions of dollars? Millions of dollars? 13 people?
There were 25 originally were, but they've, other people, they've gone on to other opportunities.
Okay.
Other opportunities such as Fire District 9 or AMR or those kinds of things, but many of them, I believe, would take their job back with the city of Spokane. I've spoken with a number of them. And I understand delaying for the purposes of getting more information, but if we're not going to have that information to be able to, to make that determination. And really, what I think we're trying to do here is just, you know, compel the administration to find some ways, if at all, to bring some people back who lost their job for, for a number of, of good reasons. And so, I think that's the purpose of it, less giving exact direction and more just please try to find this way. And so, I don't, I don't know that there needs to be a reason to defer or delay any longer on this.
Did you not do that? Did you not...
I would defer to the city attorney as it relates to the particulars, given some of the current legal status of some of those issues without commenting. I would defer to him addressing that if need be. I just can speak to the audits or the overtime reviews we're doing and where we are there that will play into ultimately how we evaluate this. In addition to, if I could point out one other item, thank you, council, for your support of additional funding for the academies because that's going to allow us, we have an academy going now. And with that additional support, which I think is, I guess I'm premature on the support. I think it's coming before you for your consideration at Finance and Administration in next week or two weeks from now. So, look forward to that discussion. To allow us to do two more academies so we can get to 60 firefighters by the end of the year so we can hopefully be in a position that we're really tackling this overtime cost more efficiently with staffing.
And I, I just want to say, I agree with that because this isn't the first time we've dealt with this issue. For as long as I've been a council member, we have these incredible overtime. So, I would like to see the numbers and, you know, how that really attributes, how the numbers attribute to the overtime, if that makes sense.
And I was, I know... I still don't understand. Did you not make accommodations or try to make accommodations for the people who were not able to continue working for the fire department because of their vaccination status?
Right. Well, if I could ask the city attorney to address the particulars, only because of some of the nuances on the legal side, I don't want to say anything that's out of step with our legal position.
Actually, the letter will detail that information for the council, but there's really two kinds of accommodations here. One was an accommodation for allow, allowing individuals to stay in their job of hire, which would have been as an EMT or firefighter. We did not feel there was a way to accommodate that. And we, we laid all that out and it will be in, in more detail. But the second method of accommodation that was provided to a number of, of the individuals who opted to take layoff status, no one was fired, no one was laid off. They were allowed to either wait until their vaccine was given and it was effective, or they could take a voluntary layoff where they, their job would be preserved if they either got vaccinated or the mandate went away within the next three years. So, so they are the first persons called back to their job. In the meantime, we had some vacancies in fire dispatch and the union agreed to remove the requirement that all our dispatchers have EMTs because they're not in direct patient care. So, five or six of the laid-off fire service personnel went into dispatch. And then, four or five of them actually received a promotion and went in to be deputy fire marshals. So, a number of the individuals who went into voluntary layoff status have already been placed back in positions with the fire department or other city jobs. Some, I think one individual opted to go into another city department where an EMT was not provided, was not required. So, there's really two kinds of accommodations that were addressed and how the city responded to this. And all the individuals who went into voluntary layoff status had a Loudermail hearing. So, the assistant chief, HR, the labor relations manager, and one of our outside attorneys had basically three days of hearings to allow every individual who wanted an accommodation to be able to present their case about how an accommodation could be provided to them.
So, if I'm one of those firefighters and I'm on that voluntary layoff list for three years, then I have, it's, it's my place to, I have that right to call up the... years, then I have, it's my place to, I have that right to call up the HR, fire department, say, I want to come back to work. I mean, how does that?
Well, if you, well, what would happen is if you received a vaccination or the vaccine mandate is lifted, then you would indicate you would like to come back.
To be put back on that list to come back.
Yes. But one of those two prerequisites has to be satisfied for you to be called back off of the layoff list.
So voluntary layoff is a bit misleading.
No, it's not, councilman. That's exactly, because they could have been terminated at that point. So we did not do that. We allowed them to go into layoff status, which protected their right to come back in their job of hire if one of two things happened because we did not, we did not feel we had the ability to do anything but that. So that was an accommodation that was negotiated between the union and the city.
So your options are you're fired or you can take a leave of absence. That's why voluntary seems misleading to me.
You could retire, or you could resign, or you could opt to go into a, I will get a vaccine, and I will use my vacation, sick leave, or take leave without pay until the vaccine is effective. And we have some individuals take that option.
So it wasn't a one-or-done deal? There were choices?
I don't, I don't believe that it was, no. Anyway, we'll have more detail in the in the report that we're trying to get together. We want to make sure it's accurate. That's what's taken us a little bit longer because a lot of time has gone by since that happened. And a lot's happened. It hasn't, it isn't so much that a lot of time's gone by, it's only been six months. But a great deal has happened in that six-month period of time that I'm sure the council will want to be aware of, and we want to be as complete as possible when we give you this information. Any other questions?
No, but thank you.
My last comment on that, again, would just be, you can get this thing that you disagree with, you can be fired, or you can't work here anymore. Those were the options they were given.
That's not what I heard, but fine.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Our next resolution is a project for downtown zip line, and our presenter is Jonathan Moog.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins, and good afternoon, City Council. I'm here today to brief a potential process for downtown zip line. Under this process, it would establish a resolution that allows staff to continue the project planning for an urban zip line. Essentially, we would gather a community working group with stakeholders across the community. We would then solicit an RFP process under consultation of that community working group, and then present the findings back to City Council.
Tell me about the outreach to Peaceful Valley Neighborhood.
We conducted our outreach with Peaceful Valley Neighborhood Council in the October of 2019. We met virtually, or I'm sorry, 2020, we met virtually. It was a good meeting. They had lots of different questions. We took those questions, responded back to them. They did provide a letter of support to move forward with the process. They are concerned about impacts to traffic. They're also concerned, and they have positive concerns, too, about this, about activation in the park. They see the advantages of activating the park. They also see some disadvantage about activating the park, mostly relating to overuse of porta-potties and the parking lot. But positive activation being, bringing positive activity into the park and making the park safer.
So will some of those folks be part of your working group?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Will some of those folks be part of your working group?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Just point of personal privilege, Mr. Moog's now my new rock star, and working on a lot of activities in the parks and cultural events and new ideas. So thank you, Jonathan. I really appreciate it.
You're welcome, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. Moog. Appreciate it. Right. Our next item, under an ordinance, amending an ordinance that vacated Dalton Avenue from Ash Place to Ash Street. Eldon Brown.
Good afternoon, excuse me. Good afternoon, council. We talked about this vacation in last Pice Committee meeting. What is it all about? Let me pull it down a little bit here. We actually vacated what's in crosshatched up there back in 1985. It was Dalton Avenue between Ash Place and Ash Street. What you can see in cross, crosshatched is what we vacated. We retained an easement for a Vista at that time. We now have a property owner that's right adjacent to Ash Place that wants to make two lots out of one parcel in there, and he had this encumbrance of this easement from a Vista on that lot. We went back to a Vista, and they've agreed to release everything shown in blue on there, which would free up that parcel in there so we could develop his second lot. So that's what we're here before you, too, is to release that easement. And be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Eldon.
Thanks.
Our next ordinance is relating to special events, cost recovery fees. Presenter is Carley Courtrite.
I think you're all sick of me by now. Any questions on this ordinance? I know I briefed it last week. Go ahead.
Well, I was just going to share, I'm considering bringing forward an amendment that would say something to the effect of, I'm still working it out, but something to the effect of neighborhood endorsed events outside of the downtown core would have a max cap of $400.
Okay, for the charge?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's the consideration. A lot of concerns from folks in Hilliard around kind of the increasing cost there. And, you know, there's a lot of other events, Logan Block Party, Perry, I mean, there's a lot of events, and so I think it makes sense to have some limit. And so
Yeah, I'd be happy to get you some data on that. No issue. Like I said, most events don't have any costs, especially ones in park, like Logan Block Party being in the park, there were no public safety costs.
Right.
So there wasn't anything. If they did move it to the street with some street closures, that could be there. So
Gotcha.
Yeah, happy to get you some data
I appreciate it.
on some of those events. Sure.
Thank you.
What about insurance? Did we figure that out?
Insurance is still required. The insurance requirement is a million-dollar commercial liability. It basically covers the city's deductible because we're self-insured. We will waive it. I work very closely with risk management on that depending on the event. So for, we have an MOU specifically with the neighborhood councils for events in parks that if they're using the park as it was intended, we will waive the insurance requirement for that. If they're doing something that's higher risk, we still make them get it. We're doing something very similar for block parties that if you're doing, in fact, that's just what Mike handed me, was a waiver reform that we're working on, that if you're having a block party in the street, as long as you're putting up the barricades where you're supposed to, you're not serving alcohol, all of those things, we'll waive the insurance because we want to have fun events. We don't want it to be a barrier. We also need to maintain our protection and risk. So always trying to find that balance, as always trying to find the wind forward.
Perfect. Thanks.
I did have one other quick question. I noticed there was a different, difference in cost for St. Patty's versus the Junior Lilac, and St. Patty's being higher.
Right.
I guess I had assumed there was higher attendance and probably more need for public safety at Junior Lilac. And so I was curious, is that not true?
Not true. And part of the reason, this is what I explained, and it's a very good question.
Yeah.
The risk element on the type of event, so trying to find that pattern, I actually was contacted by Visit Spokane. There's an event that wants to come in here in 2025, I think, and they want to have a parade, want to use that same route. And I was like, that's great, that's less work on our part. I'm going to guess the cost is going to be the same as the Junior Lilac based on the type of people that would be attending it. St. Patty's Parade actually has more people, it's a little bit longer parade than Junior Lilac. Also, people are imbibing. And so it's more of a crowd control, which is why we have more law enforcement present at St. Patty's Parade.
Gotcha. Okay.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Carley. The next three ordinances deal with, relating to design guidelines, standards for sidewalks, and the design review process. The presenter is Dean Gunderson. Okay. No Dean Gunderson.
He briefed us last week on all of these. This is probably going to be the
Mr. Gardner's in the room.
Substituting for Dean Gunderson, Planning Director Spencer Gardner.
I don't have any slides. He did brief you all, so I think unless there are any questions, you should have the information you need. Okay.
Thank you, Spencer. And our final item for briefing for the advanced agenda on Monday, May 9, first reading ordinance, changing the zone from Neighborhood Retail 35 to Neighborhood Retail 55 for property along West 8th Avenue, Donna DeBitte.
First of all, unmute myself. Thank you, council members. I'll go ahead and share my screen. Some of you may have not seen this one before. So this is for revising the zoning map, the city's official zoning map to, oh, here we go. Sorry about that. For a rezone at the listed properties of 2921, West 8th Avenue, 2918, West 8th Avenue, and 2937, West 7th Avenue, from Neighborhood Retail 35 to Neighborhood Retail 55. This is only changing the height limit. It will not change the allowed uses. The Neighborhood Retail Zone is still in place for the uses. This was a Type 3 application that went before the hearing examiner, and also there was a community meeting. So this is the site that we're looking at. It's located at the northwest corner of West Sunset Boulevard and Government Way. Some of you may be familiar with it. So this is how the existing zoning map is today. And so what this rezone would be doing would just be changing those three properties to Neighborhood Retail 55 rather than Neighborhood Retail 35. Again, same comprehensive, underlying comprehensive plan designation of Neighborhood Retail, so the allowed uses will not be changing. And I have the procedural requirements that they met up to here, in case anyone has questions about those. Any questions?
Council President, members of the City Council, that concludes our advanced briefing for May 9.
Is there a motion to approve the May 9 agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, nay? Abstentions? All right. Agenda is approved. That'll bring us to today's agenda. I noted about three different things. First, on the consent agenda, it's to approve the withdrawal of a hearing, but we would need to suspend the rules to consider that today. So is there a motion to suspend the rules for adding the withdrawal motion to the agenda?
Still moved. Second.
Okay. Any discussion about suspending the rules? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Abstentions? Okay. Now, the motion is to add the withdrawal as the item.
Still moved. Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? Okay. Item 7 is added to the consent agenda. And then the next I had was ordinance 36200, which was adding money to childcare. And I noted that Councilmember Cathcart circulated potential substitution to change the increase from $2 million to $2,500,000. So if you want to bring that motion?
Yep. I would, I would move to amend C 36200 to increase the allotment from $2 million to $2.5 million. And there's a couple places in there, and I had sent that out in an email this morning.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? I'll just note that this would be, in addition to the $1 million we already approved, so it'd be a total of $3.5 million. All right. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? Okay, that is amended. And then there is an amendment to make some minor changes to the next ordinance. So it would be a motion to accept a substitution to ordinance 36201, and those changes are redlined in the packet. Is there a motion to accept those? Substitute. Okay, so moved?
Second.
Okay, it's moved to second. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor of substituting the redline version indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any aye? Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
One nay? Any abstentions? Okay, so that substitution is approved. And then, let's see, that was, third. Okay, then the final change I see, but I'll open it up if there's anything else, is a request to suspend the rules to add Resolution 2022-0045, which we briefed at Public Safety today. This is adding to the agenda a resolution in favor of negotiating for a purchase of property of Municipal Justice Center. Is there a motion?
Still moved. Second.
Okay, it's moved to second. Any discussion about adding it to the agenda? Okay. All those in favor of adding it to the agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Two nays, I count them. Any abstentions? Okay, so five to two, that's added to the agenda. All right. Any other requested changes? All right, hearing none. Madam Clerk, if you would like to read the consent agenda?
No, we did that.
Oh, you're, I'm totally wrong. We do that at 6:00. Okay. We have new rules. All right. Anything else for the good of the order? All right. We'll see everyone at 6:00 PM. We're adjourned.